Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April meeting of the Boyd and Library Board of Trustees. At this time, I am going to send it to our Chair of the Library Trustees, Colin Ernst.
Good evening, everyone. Manny, before we're called to order, I just want to ask whether it's still necessary for me to record this session online, or is Foxborough Cable Access fulfilling that purpose for us?
So Foxborough Cable Access will record this program. So yeah, you don't have to record.
All right. So 5:00 PM, we are called to order. Appreciate everyone getting together today in some certainly unusual circumstances from a logistical standpoint and difficult circumstances from a community standpoint. I'm glad to hear everyone is well and hope we can still get together to do our work as a Board of Trustees and friends and staff. Why don't we start with our agenda? And first, if there's any public input today.
Yeah, I haven't received any email or any questions from the public, so none at this time.
Okay. Great. Then hearing none, moving on to second agenda item of our new security alarm system.
So we're going to move this till possibly May or June. With the building being shut down right now, it's hard for the company to come in and go around our facility to look at our plans. So we're hoping that come May, we'll be able to have a proposal in front of you, as well as one of the members of facilities, to basically explain the nuts and bolts of this new security system.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll look for that in a future agenda. Any questions from the trustees on that item?
No.
Next, our minutes from the March meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yep.
Any questions or corrections? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Penders, second by McGee. All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. All right. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Manny?
No correspondence at this time.
No correspondence. Okay. Moving right along to our Friends Report. Janice.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Janice.
You probably saw the email that we donated additional $1,000 for eBooks, and we've told Manny that if they need more, to let us know. Just a little something we can do to help the members. We were supposed to have our April newsletter, but with everything changing, it just didn't seem like worth the paper. So what we did is we sent a letter to all the Friends. I don't know if you read that, but basically we said that the book collection is on hold and for people to please not drop off books. That we're still trying to decide on the May book sale, but that's on hold for now. And, you know, just to kind of, you know, here are the resources the library has electronically, you know, reach out and use them. And then I've talked to Uncle Casey's Leslie Ann, and she's trying to decide about the book sale. You know, it'll really be looking towards Manny to let us know what he thinks. We're kind of being pessimistic at this point, but we're hoping that if we can't have it in May, trying to reschedule, it would be very difficult because of the meeting rooms, but there's no reason why we couldn't do some mini ones using, you know, just like have a children's sale for a day or two and then have some other sales. So I'm asking everybody to kind of think of, you know, different ways that we can do it, because we would like to move the books and, you know, people probably interested in the books. It's just how can we do it a safe way? And it's all going to depend on if the library opens and how things go forward. I think it's kind of too early to really tell. And also, the other thing is that more than words, the picks up the excess books, they're closed right now. But we are on their list as soon as they, you know, they go back on to doing pickups, that we're on their list and they'll contact us. Because Kathy from the library emailed me because she said they're doing a lot of weeding, and she goes, "We're getting a lot of books." But I guess right now they can stack them in the conference room. They're not using the conference room. And I think that's the only other thing is actually, we have a little book club from the Friends, and we're going to actually do a Zoom meeting tomorrow for our book club.
Good.
That's all I have.
Great. Thanks for your support with the eBook donation.
Yeah, that's terrific.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the communication you're doing for the community as well, and the resource, all that helps to kind of keep us tied together, which is great. Was there, Janice, is there any feedback you were looking for from the trustees or from Manny today on the books? I sounded like no, but I just wanted to be sure that you had the airtime you needed from this group, if necessary.
Just when things, you know, when we start to get some information on when things may open up, I'm sure Manny will let me know, and then we'll figure out from there, you know, what is possible and what we should do. So until the decision's made, I mean, if he had, if at any point you guys know that, hey, this definitely shouldn't happen, you need to close this down, let us know so we can get the word out.
Yeah.
If not, I guess we could just put it on hold.
Yeah. I'm hopeful, Janice, that we can have the book sale in May. I'm hopeful. If not, like you said, I'd be more than happy to have like many book sales throughout the summer. So yeah, hopeful for May. If not, we'll figure something out. We'll definitely have a book sale, though. Definitely.
Okay. Because the one thing I was thinking, too, is that if we, you know, if there's still some concern about crowds, we could maybe just not advertise it as much as a way to and try to at least have it for, you know, our community.
Agreed.
Daisy?
Has there been any thought about moving it, like outdoors? Does that make a difference? Or like?
Well, my husband actually said, "Why don't we rent a tent and put it on the common?" We'd need a lot of volunteers to get the books over and back, you know, but it's an idea.
How much time do you need from a kind of publicity and communication standpoint prior to the event? So like, when do you need to make the decision around go or no go?
I think Leslie Ann was thinking, you know, maybe by mid-May, mid-May, you're right, mid-April, which would be next week, right? But by the same token, like I said, we could, we can always do our blasts out to the Friends themselves and post it in like the Foxborough Reporter. So if we don't get as wide a group, you know, I don't know, it would, it would make the numbers go down, but at least it would give us a way to move some of the books.
But you're going to be in the state of emergency and in the surge by the time you need in order to be able to make a decision on whether or not to have the book sale at all for end of, or mid-May. So what would you, what would you be able to get for information that would help inform that differently than what we have now? I don't, I just don't know.
I don't, that's just it. I think that's why we're leaving to, do we have to cancel? I think we just have to put our advertising on hold, and when, you know, if we don't get something until May, you know, I think the book sale starts on the 13th or 14th. You know, if we don't get something till, you know, May, the first week in May, it's going to be a smaller book sale, but if we can do it, we'll do it.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to, schools are closed until May 4th at the earliest. State of emergency is in effect until May 4th at the earliest. It seems unlikely, based on what, what I'm hearing, that, that that just won't be extended. So.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I say unlikely, that it would or wouldn't be extended.
Well, breaking news, that's the way to clear the room, I guess. It seems unlikely to me that it will not be extended, meaning it seems likely to be extended.
Okay. So in that case, if, then I think we would be postponing it till, you know, whenever it's available and we can find a room for it. And, you know, like I said, we may have to tailor it in some way. Maybe we will do two or three smaller ones over the course of the summer. I don't know.
Yeah. I think we want to exercise real care with that, just given the range of ages and some of the vulnerable population that may be some of our customers for that or some of our volunteers for that. And we want to be sure that because we're handing books, it's a real quick way to pass germs. So whatever we can do to support you as you move it, but I just want to be really careful that we're not an accelerator for reinfection in any of our library activities.
And, you know, if you, if you feel that I should just say, it's not going to happen, it's definitely not going to happen May, we can make that decision right now. I think that would be, I think we're kind of waiting for someone to tell us what to do, too.
I'm feeling that's probably the recommendation, that any time in May would be too early. Is that, does anyone disagree with that?
No, I would agree with that.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Perfect. Then I'll let Leslie Ann know, and then we'll wait and see when things open up. And, I mean, I was trying to think of anything out of the box. You know, once the library opens up, maybe we can have a person go in and do scanning and take, take more stuff out, because that would be one person in the room. Maybe I was thinking we could have, you know, book sale by appointment where people could contact us and go in, and it would reduce, you know, it would reduce that, the person to person. Right now, all those books are clean, but once we open it up, then there may be a chance of spreading. But obviously, but it's less chance spreading out a book than it is standing next to a person that's coughing, so.
So you're saying the bigger the donation, they get to go in first before they've all been touched?
Yeah. But just to close, why don't I just let Leslie Ann know, we're going to put it on hold. It won't be held in May, and we will see come May, you know, if there's something that we could do in July or August. Okay?
Yeah, I think, Janice said it gets a great tradition, and certainly the town loves it. And we, I think as a group, all want to be supportive of it, too, but all traditions are out the window right now.
No, I have no problem whatsoever. I was kind of like, not sure what, which way you wanted us to go. So, you know, we'll support whatever you guys think. That's all helped Leslie Ann, because she was agonizing with making the decisions. So we have a decision, and I'll ask people to please still keep thinking of out of the box ways of doing this, because there might be other ways that we could do it. Not in May, but, you know, down the line. Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janice.
All right. Moving on to professional staff reports.
So during this trying time, our librarians have been nonstop working, as usual. Margie Rosetti has been doing, and I don't know if you've seen it yet on our Facebook page, she's been doing storytimes, which she did one today, which she's going to be doing often, and we've gotten a great response from it. And one of our other librarians in the children's room has been doing 60-second science experiments from home. So, and she's going to be doing some nighttime storytimes as well. So, yeah, Margie's been, you know, handling the children's room, still purchasing books and videos for the library. Suzanne Roberts, who is our technical services librarian, she's still at work purchasing DVDs and young adult materials, CDs, doing cataloging as well. Tim Golden, who are, who is our reference librarian, he's been answering a lot of reference questions via our Ask the Librarian service that we have, which has been very helpful. He's in charge of purchasing the nonfiction books, so he's been doing that. And then Kathy Bohrni has been doing a plethora of duties during this time. All the Facebook notices that you see and the email blast, that's all Kathy, and she's doing cataloging as well, and she's also purchasing the fiction books for our library as well. So even though we are closed, the librarians are still acting like we're open. We're getting the latest material, so once we do open the doors again, we'll have the latest titles for our patrons, so.
The dedication, the energy of the staff has been remarkable as they think about ways to continue serving throughout this, and I'm sure, you know, all of our different organizations have found, you know, this situation has created new innovations on how to reach the community and extend out further. The team's doing a nice job of that, but also you may find some ideas that extend post-COVID crisis as ways to reach the community. So just wanted to recognize the great work of the team.
Yes. We definitely have our thinking cap on, because right now, you know, this is all new to us, so we're throwing everything at the wall and see what sticks, so.
Is there anything you need from the trustees in terms of feedback, ideas, as you think about engaging with the community? Are you doing a great job? I just want to be sure you have the support of this group for any dialogue that you need.
I do appreciate that. You know, at this time, I think we're on a good, a good course, but we're always looking for, for new and interesting ways to engage with the community, especially further and further this goes on. And we have, we have a few ideas that Margie and I were talking about, and so it looks like we have actually a new streaming service that will be starting up tomorrow, which is called Canopy, which is basically a Netflix for libraries. And patrons with their Boyd and Library card, they'll be able to access this service. We'll have a Facebook post tomorrow. It'll be on our website tomorrow. And I was just looking at it myself, and they have all, all the genres on there, all current titles, classic documentaries. They also have something called Canopy Kids, which has a Sesame Street collection, which is really cute as well. So that's something that we're going to be introducing to our patrons starting tomorrow.
Any, any questions for Manny from the trustees on professional staff reports? Again, great job to the team. All right. Moving on to financial reports. Anything you want to pull our attention to in particular with financial reports? I assume we've all had a chance to review those.
So it's business as usual. You know, like, like I said before, even though the library is closed, we still have our duty to purchase titles and, and other services, you know, for, for our community. So it's steady, you know? We've, the, the cleaning crew did come in and did a deep clean of the entire building. They had foggers, they had, they sprayed the entire library to just destroy all the bacteria. And once we're given the green light to open again, we're going to do it again. So once our doors open up, back up, our patrons can come in and the place will be clean.
Excellent. Great. No other questions on financial reports? We'll move into your director's report, please. Don't wait. Kevin?
I do have one before we move on. Sorry, Colin. Manny, assuming that we are, under the assumption that we're closed for a longer period of time, you know, we're, we're closed now arguably through May 4th, that'll be about a month, little over a month at that point, and then that, you know, assuming that it extends, do you anticipate that we'll be given money back to the town for the budget in this year, this year's cycle, because the budget will come closed at July, July 1st?
There's a, yeah, there's a possibility that, that may happen. As far as our purchasing books and videos, we're usually really good to spend the entire amount, but there may be some money that, yes, we'll have to, that will go back to the town.
It seems like something associated with, you know, the utilities allotment or cleaning or just some of the general year-end supplies that we would be doing as we get to the end of the budget cycle may not be as necessary to incur now.
Yeah, definitely the cleaning service. You know, they would be coming six days a week, so, yeah.
I guess I would just suggest that whatever you don't need to expend, given the uncertainty in terms of, you know, financial status going forward, whatever you don't need to expend to meet your mandatory allotments with the Board of Library Commissioners, you know, while we usually are looking at it as an opportunity to, to take stock of what things we have on a, on a wish list, maybe this year is a year where we want to think about what things we might need to be giving back.
Agreed.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah.
Anything else on financial reports? No, again, thanks for the recommendation, Kevin. Manny, Director's Report.
So I do have some good news. So we've had a annual tradition and a good relationship with Lakeville Pavilion when it comes to a donation towards our museum and attraction service that we offer. So even during this time, Lakeville Pavilion donated money towards our museum passes, and we're extremely grateful for that. Once everything's back up and running, all these museums and various attractions, hopefully we'll, we'll be up and running as well, so our patrons can enjoy that again. So I personally do want to thank everyone at Lakeville Pavilion to continue this relationship with the library. And I can say, as the Director, it, it puts a lot of smiles on, on families that do check these museum passes out, and it gives them the opportunity to explore and to go to various, the aquarium or the Children's Museum or Plymouth Plantation. It gives them that opportunity to, to enjoy themselves. So I'm, I'm very happy that Lakeville, Lakeview, excuse me, you know, even during this time, gave us a donation. So we, we really appreciate that. So that, that was very good news. Another bit of good news, and Colin, you may have gotten this. If not, I can send it to you, but we did get our second state aid payment. So I can, I can send that to actually the entire board tomorrow morning. I'll, I'll scan it and send it to everybody. So that was good news as well. So.
What's the amount on that?
And with the state aid, it has to go towards some sort of capital improvement.
Okay, great.
So during this time, I've had several meetings, actually in this room, with the town manager and various department heads, and we appreciate the administration giving us updates on, you know, what's going on in the town, and they've been, actually, they've been there offering their services if, if we need help. So there's been constant communication with all the departments and the administration. So I personally appreciate that, because we're all in this together. So I've gone to many a meetings here in this room within the past, within the past month. Like I said, the town, the administration has been giving us updates on that. And, I mean, besides that, I, you know, just doing my daily library duties, looking at programming down the line, thinking the summer, thinking the fall, ways that we can, the library can engage more with the community. And Janice speaking before with, with the book sale, we can come, come up with inventive ways of, of doing the book sale and reaching out to the community, because I do think that's going to be our role once we're up and running again, is to get everybody back to the library and to just show all the services that we offer as well. So just looking at new technology. Technology is constantly evolving, so doing that as well, and other ways to market the library. So it's just, you know, just daily tasks. I'm on the sales board, and we had our monthly meeting via Zoom as well. So, you know, just attending meetings, doing a couple of webinars as well during this time, so.
Excellent. Yeah, I think with a lot of organizations and businesses, now is a time when you can step back to plan so that we all come out of this even stronger. It sounds like you're spending time to do that, which is great as well.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the, from the Board or Director's Report? All right.
Manny, my, this is Deb. My phone's been cutting out. Oh, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Manny, I was curious if our overdrive numbers are, are up significantly.
They are. Our overdrive numbers are up, and our hoopla numbers are up. Actually, our hoopla numbers almost doubled within, we closed the building early March, March 16th. So our numbers have, have gone up with that. Patrons are able to borrow up to five either eBooks or video, music, and our patron's been utilizing that. I've been utilizing that as well. So yeah, definitely have seen an increase in that and in overdrive. And, you know, thank you to the Friends for their donation. Kathy and Margie were able to purchase more titles, more trending titles for, for our patrons. So definitely, yeah.
Moving on to liaison reports. Oops, sorry. Did you have something else?
Everyone's getting very tech savvy, and it's good to know.
Now, liaison reports, any, anything you need to report from our liaisons? I don't think there's been much since last month on, on it. Any of these subcommittee reports, we'll kind of loop in there as well.
I have no report to offer.
Nor do I.
Nope, nope, nope. Okay. Then moving on to old business. First is the children's services, child-friendly furniture. Thanks again for the recommendation, Deb. Update on that.
So Margie has been communicating with the sales rep of Creative Concepts. Our sales rep is, either lives in New Rochelle or lives right outside of New Rochelle, so obviously he can't come to the library to show off the various furniture. So Margie and the sales rep have been in constant communication. So next month, Margie will be prepared with a, with a proposal for some new children's furniture for our children's room.
Is the, is the shutdown and the quarantine of the rep and essentially everyone, is that slowing that down? Do you want to push back that process? What is, if somebody asked the question differently, what has this shutdown presented in terms of obstacles to, to making the purchase of the equipment that you want? Or are there none?
There are none. The only obstacle would be the furniture would arrive in six to eight weeks. So if we bring a proposal to our May meeting and trustees give the green light, then six to eight weeks, so maybe late June, early July, the, the furniture would be here. Hopefully, we're up and running again, but if we need to, you know, I think it just all depends on what's going on in the world by our May meeting. So if, if everything is looking, if it's looking better, then we can possibly order it by mid-May and expect an arrival late June, early July. Or if things are still not looking good, then maybe we just, you know, we still, we still want to order the, the furniture, maybe just postpone it until we're actually open and, you know, ready to have this new furniture in our children's room. So I guess it's kind of up in the air, but at least by next month, I will have a, a quote from the, from the sales rep.
We'll, we'll pick it up in May and see how we're doing and take a look at what Margie's pulled together. Good. Any questions on that group? No? Okay. Spinning Series, author selection update. Manny, thanks for sending the recommended list. I thought you did a nice job of gathering some diversity of topic and diversity of feedback. background, which I think is really important for us as a community leader. I trust folks had a chance to take a look at the list and the authors. Manny, as you did that work, and thanks again for your work on it, were there authors that stood out that you would recommend that we give special consideration to as, what do you think worked best for the program?
Yeah, Colin, I do want to say that, I mean, all the authors were incredible, just reading their story and their works. I really liked Vikram Chandra, who wrote the book Sacred Games, and apparently it's a series on Netflix, which I didn't know. I really, I like that. I like Gish Jen, Lisa Ko as well, with The Leavers. And actually, the author at the bottom, Imbolo Mabui as well. But I do have to say, they were all excellent. The agency that I work with, really, I thought hit a home run with all these authors. I think we'd be, it would be excellent to get any one of these. This was a hard list to like, come up with a top three, because they're all, they're outstanding. I didn't know if the board had any that they were particularly interested with.
Books?
I agree with you on the very last name, Manny.
Yes.
Imbolo Mabui. And she's got a new novel, really a nice time.
She does, yeah.
Coming out for our purposes, so I was drawn to that selection.
Yeah. Yeah. I do want to say too, because I did watch them on YouTube, and Gish Jen, she's hysterical. Watching her program, she was hysterical, so. But they were all outstanding. They were terrific speakers, but I got a kick out of her. She's got a good sense of humor.
I took a look at the list as well. I think the, so I'm just flipping over from the screen to look at my notes from that. For me, I was looking for somebody who had multiple books, so they maybe had more of a draw in terms of, you know, repeating opportunities. I confess, you have, in the list that you provided us, there's one that says, so there's Diana Abu-Jabbar, who has a host of books that she, that spoke to me just because of a breadth of material. Underneath her is something that says Mexican-American writers working today. I don't know who that is. I didn't get a name.
I think it's Anna Castillo.
Oh, okay. Maybe I edited that out.
No, that was just, I didn't paste the author's name.
So I can't speak to her, and I certainly will take a look. Gish Jen was of interest to me, based on that same criteria, and I took a look at her online, as was Maza Mangiste, the Shadow King. So just, those were the criteria that I was really using as I was looking through them, just to try to get somebody who had multiple copies to be able to draw from. Although, having somebody with a new book coming out, if in fact, they're still scheduled to do so on the schedule, that would be of interest too, because you have new currency there. Anna Castillo was the name of the other author?
Yes.
Okay.
Christine, you were gonna? No? You're on mute if you're trying to talk, I can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm just moving.
That's okay.
No, it was a very good list, very good list.
Yeah. I tended to look at the list in a similar way as Kevin did, looking for authors with multiple books. I gravitated towards, actually, the two that I mentioned, Gish Jen and Imbolo Mabui. I probably put Gish Jen slightly ahead, just because of a broader breadth of material, but also I liked her take on a range of different things that make us, any community culturally diverse. So I thought that was a really interesting take, and might find a lot of different interest levels and angles there. Tom, did you have any, any strong opinions one way or the other?
No, I really didn't. I mean, like Manny, I was just so impressed with the list. I defer to those who have spent more time researching and looking into them.
So I guess the question I would ask, based on that, Colin, is, and Manny, is there a range of pricing on these individuals? And based on that, you know, what would the ranges be we'd be looking at?
So all the authors listed are in the range between 5,000 to 10,000. So they're all in that price range. They all live in the Northeast.
Excellent. Except for, I guess, or maybe, maybe now, but I was looking it up. Asai, and I butchered that, Washington Black is the name of the author, is the name of the book. She's listed as being in British Columbia.
Yeah. She, her, and it might have been Anna Castillo. I want to say she's either in Wisconsin or Illinois, but they do have a residence in New York City.
Okay. And unfairly, but quickly, looking at Anna Castillo, I would just comment that if her, if her main work is short stories and poems, I just don't think we would get a very good draw.
Good.
Yeah.
Manny, do you have the feedback you're looking for from the board?
I do. So what I, what my next step will be is to contact the agency and check availability for these authors. Now, I still have the dates of October the 14th, which is a Wednesday, and then I have another date of October 21st. So I will check, I'll check the availability, and then I'll check the pricing for, I can look at Gish Jen, Maza Mangiste, Diana Abdul-Jabbar, and then Imbolo Mabui?
Mabui. Great.
So I can do that, and then report back next month.
One of the things we should keep in mind with the contracting process is what is the, what's the cancellation? Should this crisis not subside at the level we thought it'd be safe to gather the community in the Robert Center? Or if there would have to be some sort of resurgence that has public places shut down? We just want to be sure we're.
Yeah, absolutely.
The dollar's effectively there.
Yeah, definitely. It's, yeah, it's a whole new world now.
Yep. Good, any other comments or questions for Manny on this spinning series at this point? Kevin?
I just wanted to say, consistent with this and the closure of the library and everything else, Manny, thank you very much for the job that you've been doing to gather information, to share that information with us, to keep the staff in the loop as well, and just be really supportive for all different aspects of this very not normal course of changes.
I appreciate that, Kevin, thank you. And I thank the entire board for being so supportive throughout the years, and especially during this crazy time right now. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Good, okay. Then moving on to the May and June trustee appointments for the Friends meetings.
Yeah.
Janice, how are the Friends meetings going to, forgive me, I'm now at the speed on how you're approaching April. How is that process going to keep working?
Well, in April, we, I had just an executive board meeting with the four offices, and we just sent that letter and just said, we don't really, you know, there's really nothing right now, and would revisit in May. I think if we, I think now that I've been doing Zoom and other people have been doing Zoom, and that, you know, maybe we would try to do a Zoom meeting, just to touch base with people. So given, I don't know the date, what is it? The library's closed for May 4th. I guess maybe I should just say, make an executive decision that the May meeting will be via Zoom.
So that would be May 6th? That's the first Wednesday in May?
Yeah, so if the library, I mean, if things opened up in the library miraculously was open, two days later, I think people probably just be happy with Zoom. We could always, we can always, you know, cancel face-to-face, but I think a Zoom meeting would probably be in the best interest of everybody at this time.
Deb or Kevin, are you available to attend that meeting? I know, Christine, you have a standing commitment on the Wednesdays, correct? And Tom's service will be, will be through at that point, I believe, right?
I don't think it will.
No, actually, Tom is a board member until the next election, so Tom's with us for a little while longer.
So Tom's got the May meeting?
I'm happy to take the May meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Deb. May 6th. All right, so Janice, just send me the code.
I will.
Put that on the calendar.
And the June, the June meeting, Janice, do you happen to have that?
So that, June, June 3rd would be the first Wednesday.
And I hope we'll be back in the library.
Me too.
And if we are, I could take it.
Okay.
And if we're not, you can take it too? Be a Zoom? Okay, great.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll do that, we'll have Kevin, whether it's Zoom or in face-to-face at the library. Okay, thank you very much.
Great. All right. Moving on to new business. The, we saw the report on the trust funds and restrictions for each. Was there a specific action item, aside from our review and getting up to speed on those funds and the restrictions that we had to take on that? I don't recall one, but I think we just, it came up in conversation, we wanted to stand with this.
I had asked at the last meeting that Manny make that part of the regular reporting, so that we all had a good sense of what it was.
And did you get the Boyd and Library Trust Fund history and restrictions? Did you get that included in the packet?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, okay. All right.
Yes, yep.
Any other questions on that? Thanks for the information, Manny, and for the recommendation, Kevin, to have the fire bar.
The only question I have on that, Colin, is as I'm looking at it, Manny, does this, this does not include the Beyond Books Trust?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that needs to be accounted for, for us somewhere as well.
Okay. I'll have that for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, I'm just thinking of it all in one place, that's all. And at some point in the, you know, some point in the future, when we're all able to actually talk about how to spend money, we should really take a look at these individual accounts, you know, the Boyd and the Waterhouse, the Evelyn Thomas. Each one of these, for folks who haven't looked at them yet, have restrictions on them in terms of how much we can expend at a time, and in terms of what they can be expended on, some differently than others. And, you know, there's a, you know, we should look at, we should look at whether or not we're doing it in a meaningful way, so that it doesn't just continue to grow, so that we can't purchase all the books on sports, physical therapy that might be otherwise held.
Yep.
That's good.
Okay.
Agreed.
Anything else on our trust funds? Okay, great. Board of library trustees vacant seat?
Yeah, I know this was discussed last month, when everything was still up and running, and I know the town election has been postponed. So I really don't have an answer at this moment on where to go with this, because everything's kind of in flux right now, as far as filling that available seat. But actually, we're live right now, so maybe one of our residents would be interested in, you know, joining the trustees.
Or maybe one of our trustees will decide that they need to stay.
Yeah, that's true.
And he's gone dark. Well, then we'll turn back to our TV viewing audience. Okay, so we'll, seat is not vacant for now, obviously, till we move forward, and then we'll need to keep that on our radar. Good, anything else on that topic? Last item, library operations amidst the coronavirus.
Yeah. So I had gave an update before about the library having a deep clean, the entire building. We'll be doing that again, once we're given the green light to open up. And, you know, I've been thinking about, you know, once we open up, will there be limitations, X number of people entering the building? And so that's what I've been doing the past few weeks, is figuring out, once we open, will there be limitations? Will there be restrictions? So, yeah, I've just been, you know, no one knows at this point. So I've been just thinking of every scenario, once we open, because, I mean, I do miss the, the library's always hopping, so obviously, it's a ghost town right now. So we definitely want to get our patrons back. So I've been about that. The one thing I do want to bring up when it, when it comes to the COVID-19, is just, and we would need a vote, obviously, we're closed, but we still have programs listed through the end of April. So I was just wondering if we could get a vote on suspending all meeting room usage, at least through, I believe it's May 4th, from the governor, so.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that'll be another, you know, it's another topic I've been thinking about, is once we're open, if there's a limit on number of people, what does that, you know, does that include our community room? Because we do have programs, especially our children's programs, where we'll have 50, 60, 70 people in that, just in that room alone. So I guess it's still the unknown right now, so I'll definitely keep everyone posted and updated on what's, you know, what's going to happen.
Yeah, I'm sure there's going to be information, both from Town Hall, but also from some of your peers, you know, locally and nationally on this, to help us think about what does library operations need to look like moving forward, and what are some of the precautions? And potentially, what are some of the expense implications if we need to do more frequent and more deep cleaning? So that may be something, you know, if we assume that there's a potential that town buildings open up on or around May 4th, there may be some discussions, we need to have an interim meeting to talk about what those policies are. So you can keep us posted on what you're hearing again, Town Hall, and from your colleagues at other libraries, so we can be prepared to have the discussions as a board of trustees to support the decisions for the library.
Yeah.
For the time that we can hopefully welcome the community back in.
Yeah, that's been something that, I mean, number one, and I mentioned this earlier, the administration here in Foxborough's been updating us constantly, so everyone is in the loop. But then also, I'm conversing with various directors, not only in sales, but just throughout the state, and they're going through the same thing that I'm going through, and we're trying to figure out what we can do and what's going to happen. So if anything, what's going on in the world right now, actually, when it comes to the libraries here, and specifically Massachusetts, a lot of directors that I rarely hear from, they're actually reaching out and joining the discussion on what are we going to do? What services, what new services we're going to offer? Will there be limitations? Will there be restrictions? So that part's been, that part's been good, because we've, like I said, there are various directors that have been very silent when it comes to discussions, but now they're opening up, because they, we're all in the same but now they're opening up because they, we're all in the same boat, basically.
That's great.
Can I make a, well, ask a question, make a suggestion? If indeed the governor extends beyond May 4th, can we include in the wording of what we just gave to Manny, that as long as, and I'm not sure what the exact right language is, whether it's shelter in place or shutdown, remains in effect, that all programs shall be suspended? In that way, wouldn't require a separate meeting, separate vote to allow him to simply say, yeah, this, you know, we've already talked about this, this is part of the plan?
We want to tie it to the, I'm trying to think if there's an easy thing we can kind of tie that to? I'm not sure that school district operations is the right one. It's maybe an easy one, but may not be the right one. Kevin, do you have a different suggestion on what we tie that to?
Yeah, I think you would tie it to his essential personnel emergency order. You know, if he extends the parameters of his work-from-home emergency order, that the, that the library, which would then close the library. I mean, it's really if the library remains closed, that the, that the motion is extended for the period of time by which, in accordance with Governor Baker's emergency services order, you know, those programmings, that programming that's currently scheduled would also be canceled if the, if the time by which the library has to remain closed is extended.
Does that sound about right to everybody?
Yes.
Kevin, do you want to make a motion so we can have that as the official guidance?
So I would, well, I guess it would be a motion to amend the vote we've already taken. So to further, so a motion to further amend the vote we just took to extend the authority to cancel events and programming at the library in the event that Governor Baker extends the nonessential personnel and stay-at-home provisions that are currently in effect beyond the May 4th deadline that he has established.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five aye. Anything else we should cover today, Manny?
No, I just hope our next meeting, we're in person. Hoping.
Me too, me too. Before we adjourn, two things, I just want to thank Mike Weber and Foxborough Cable Access for stepping in so often, some of the unsung heroes of the town to help us communicate and engage. So Mike, really appreciate you hopping in and coming out of your shelter in place to help us conduct business as a board and as members of the town. And then Manny, thank you for the fantastic work you're doing from a leadership standpoint, engaging the community, engaging your team. And, you know, please pass along to all of your team members the thanks of this board of trustees for the fantastic work they're doing to keep engaging the community, their innovation on doing so. And we're all just as eager as they are and you are to get back into standard operations. But this is the right, the right thing to do at this point, to be closed down. But thank you again for your work and your stamina through that. I know it's tough, so appreciate your stamina and leading through this.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other business to cover before we adjourn?
I move we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor? All five, all right.
Take care, everyone, great seeing you all.
Thank you.